All right, counsel. All right, counsel. We'll come back in after lunch at 2:04 PM. We have, huh? My mic is on.
Motion approved our last one.
So we have a last item, which is O S T E N B D. Resolution, Madam Secretary, can you read that, please?
Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving the loan with First National Bank of Gordon for the Prairie Wind Casino. We skip down to the third whereas on November 3rd, 2025, the Economic and Business Development Committee of the Tribal Council recommended approval. That should say, oh, a loan with First National Bank of Gordon in the amount of $2,649,000 for the Prairie Wind Casino. And the committee referred the matter to a special session of the Tribal Council for its review and approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council hereby approves the loan with First National Bank of Gordon in the amount of $2,649,000 for the Prairie Wind Casino. And be it further resolved that the loan is to be used for fun operations, used to fund the operations of the Prairie Wind Casino, including the gaming and non-gaming operation, and is to be repaid by the Prairie Wind Casino. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council authorizes the tribal president or in his absence, the tribal vice president and the tribal treasurer to sign all necessary loan documents for and on behalf of the tribe. And Ed Fagan, general manager of the Prairie Wind Casino, is authorized to sign on behalf of the casino certification.
Madam Secretary.
We have a motion by Councilman Steele. Uh, go ahead, Steve.
The, the date of the committee meeting was November 7th in the final whereas clause. And after we drafted this, we did get a copy, a draft of the loan. So if you'd like, we can add a be it further resolved clause that says, be it further resolved that the loan has a five-year term, an interest rate of 4.05% and monthly payments of $48,844.61, the first of which is due in December 2025. And the loan is secured by a 60-month certificate of deposit in the tribe's name in the full amount of the loan. And I'll send that to you as a revised copy.
Thanks, Steve. Motion maker, is that okay with you to add that? Councilman Steele? He said yes. Uh, Councilman Kelly, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So, looking at, at the numbers, we're gonna be paying an interest of about $107,248 for five years, which equates out to about $536,000 and change in interest? Steve? Over half million in interest on a two and a half million dollar loan roughly?
Are you asking if that's accurate, Councilman Kelly?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm asking because it's not outlined in here.
Attorney Gunn, is that correct?
I, I have not run that schedule, but I can run it right now.
My, my second question while he's doing that, what, uh, what are we mortgaging? Because if you read the, the promissory note, on the second page, at the very top, it talks about conform to any limitations of the Real Estate Settlement Procedures Act.
Treasurer, do you have an answer for that?
That's just generic language in the agreement. We're not mortgaging anything, nothing at all. We're getting a CD and, and an E B and D. We've had this discussion about 10 times. So we went over what we were going to do. We're going to buy a $2.6 million CD, certificate of deposit, and that's going to be the collateral. That will be in the name of the tribe and be set aside for the duration of the loan. So there's no property being mortgaged.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Steve.
I, um, want to answer Mr. Kelly's question. And it, it would be nice if, um, if Cora Whitehorse could confirm this, but if the loan amount is $2,649,000 over a term of five years with an interest rate of 4.05%, the total of 60 payments would be approximately $2.930709 million with total interest of $281,709 more or less. That's, um, that's what I'm calculating. So 60 payments, um, and again, um...
60 payments, I only ran it at 59. Yeah. You know? So that's what I based it on, 59 payments rather than the 60.
Okay.
Well, while they're doing that, Chair, you know, I got a, a follow-up question at the very page three. From the borrower Ogallala Sioux Tribe. That a credit agreement must be in writing to be enforceable under Nebraska law. So, are, are any of our attorneys licensed to practice in Nebraska? Is basically the question.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Steve.
I am not licensed in Nebraska. But, um, I have handled cases for the tribe in Nebraska using local counsel. And I do know of local counsel who would, who would, um, who would have to be engaged by the tribe and on the papers. And then if they move our admission, what they say pro hoc vicie for the case, then we can practice. Otherwise, um, you would have to have an attorney that is licensed in Nebraska. I, I don't know, um, if any of your, um, in-house or contract attorneys are licensed in Nebraska.
Thank you, Steve. Um, Treasurer?
The total amount of interest on this loan after all 59 payments are made is $230,200.
Is that per year or for the five years?
For the five years.
Madam Treasurer?
I don't see.
Yeah.
Does the, does the loan have, I, does, does it call for 59 payments or 60 payments?
Sorry. I thought it was 60 payments, but they're saying it was 59.
Thank you, Chair, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. One second, um, the Treasurer's looking at the contract and then...
59 payments of $48,944 and one final payment of $14,050. So $14,050 would be a total of $244,700 in interest.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Uh, Councilwoman Hoverson?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask Steve where he's calculating his numbers because if you take the loan, $2,649,000, times it by the 4.05 interest, you come up with $107,254.50 a year. And if you times that by five years, you come up with $536,272.50 um, with total interest for five years. But you're saying about half of that. So how are you calculating your figures?
Um, thank you. With every payment, part of the payment is applied to the principal and part of it is applied to interest. The part that's applied, I'm sorry, the part that's a, applied to principal will reduce the principal amount of the loan. And so the interest that would be due, um, is, is reduced. So it's not that we agree to pay 4.05% of the total loan amount each year for five years. We agree to pay 4.05% of the remaining loan balance, um, as interest. So as the principal amount goes down, the amount of interest goes down. Um, the payments remain the same. The monthly payments remain the same because they're amortized over the five-year period. So, um, in, in the first year, you're, you're paying, you know, um, a lot more in interest than you are in the fifth year. But this is just, uh, another way of approaching this. It's, it's just based on amortization tables. Another way of approaching it is to take the 59 equal payments multiply that times 59, and then add the amount of the final payment, which is $14,000 plus or minus, and then subtract the principal amount of the loan. The, the, the remaining balance will represent the interest payment. And I think that's what the secretary did. The only difference in her numbers and mine is that I use 60 equal payments, but I, I think she's correct. The 60th payment is smaller.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
So, I, I guess I'm, I'm, after reading the document, I'm a little confused. Or, or is this the Ogallala Sioux Tribe that's going into further debt for the casino? Or is this a, a, an agreement by the casino? Because if you look at the Acknowledgement and Regulation B, intent to apply for joint credit, by signing below, we acknowledge the intention to apply for joint credit on November 7th, 2025, joint being us and P W C. If Ed Fagan or the P W C doesn't work out and they default, does this rely or lie right on the tribal council to fix?
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does. And the casino belongs to the tribe. And I don't know if you are on E B and D, but the casino is in debt, serious debt. And we were given two options. One, make a loan to pull it out. Or two, liquidate the, the property at the casino. That would put 100, and I think they got it down to 120 employees out of a job. So either we make the loan and allow them to, allow the general manager to start trying to bring the casino back. Or we don't make the loan and put 120 people out of jobs and close the casino. That's basically all it comes down to.
Councilman Goldsberg?
Thank you, Chair. No, this is a touchy subject because the day I came into office, I knew the casino was, uh, in, in a trouble. But you know what it is, since we're here today, trying to get a loan. Well, my question is like, and I never got a clear answer on this. Why did casino get that in debt anyways? And whose fault is it? Because I could never get a clear answer on that. And there's a lot of finger pointing, but I think we need to take a look at that issue too. Because that's just allowing people just to drain, drain the casino and walk away free. I mean, I don't know if anybody's in trouble or not, but that's some serious debt out there.
It was neglect on the part of prior G M's. There's no nice way to put it. They didn't pay their bills. And now we're stuck with them. So either we're going to pay the bills or we're not and close. It's simple. But it comes from neglect. They took machines out of Eastwind Casino because Prairie Wind didn't pay their bill. Even though they took the money from Eastwind and put it in their coffers. So it's really up to you guys whether you want it to move or close.
You good, Councilman? Okay, Councilman Greenwald and Councilwoman Spodber.
So along them same lines, like, uh, Mr. Goldsberg's talking is, what reassurances do we have that our casino is even gonna make money, even to make payroll? Because it seemed like that was an issue, is being able to make payroll. And then continue to pay his bills and pay for the bank loan. You know, we could say, put it on, if I vote no, that I'm gonna be the guy that causes all these people to lose their jobs. But at what point is that casino? Because we all know the hotels crumbling. At what point, I mean, are we, my thing is E N B D and finess, what is our alternative plan? Where, where are some alternative sites on how to fix this or to address this with this big new casino and a panhandle coming? Those are real serious questions and, and do I put our tribe in further debt? Because that's a big issue with the people is you guys keep on getting loans and we're stuck paying for them in years down the road. Those are my questions.
At the last E N B D meeting, um, the GM, Mr. Fagan, he did bring a spending plan. Here it is. He did bring a spending plan on how he will bring up the profit. It does include a few cuts, but not of people. It's cuts of hours. And his current staff is willing to take the cuts of hours until they can bring in more business to carry them. Because it's better to have a part-time job than no job. So he has a, he had a whole spending plan that he passed out at the last E N B D meeting that I think it, it would behoove all of you to look at. Yeah.
Steve?
Thank you. And, um, to the question of who's on the loan and who's responsible for the loan, both the tribe and the casino, the way the loan is structured, both the tribe and the casino would sign the loan. The loan is secured by a certificate of deposit, which is provided by the tribe. So the tribe is the only party signing the security agreement. And, um, I don't know if the treasurer purchased the certificate of deposit yet. But that would be a certificate of deposit in the full amount of the loan. So $2,649,000. And the bank would essentially place a hold on that money until the loan is repaid. If, if a payment is missed, then the bank would have the ability to take, um, the debt from the certificate of deposit. It's essentially a loan that's secured by the C D.
Thanks, Steve. Councilman Greenwald, do you have anything else? Councilwoman Spodber, Councilman Cross, and Councilman Steele?
Thank you. I do, the question is for the treasurer. If this is not approved, um, do we have enough to make up for unemployment payments? Can you answer that on the record?
The casino doesn't, so that would fall back on the tribe too.
Thank you. Also, um, I know we, I just want to remind the committee for those that were not there or have not been there. Uh, there have been attempts to utilize our S S B C I program that would have, uh, made this loan a little bit smaller. Not by much, but it would have made it smaller, making the interest and the payback not, um, not so large either. And essentially, we could have been paying ourselves back with interest. However, that was something that didn't get completed. I just want to remind the committee of that, that we, there were several attempts. Because initially, I was against making a loan. I don't like the idea of making any loans at all for our tribe. But there was no way other than there has been a lot of negligence that have happened out there. And I know that, you know, some don't like to hear it, but I always say that we have to take some onus and, and a lot of these responsibilities. When the casino makes fun, any type of revenue, what does the council do? Give us that money so we can get it, the out to allocations. We don't allow for a buildup. But I mean, maybe that's something that could be discussed later down the line. Those are some things that we can talk about and how we're gonna take care of our districts. Thank you.
Treasurer, do we know how much that unemployment would be? Okay. No, she doesn't. That's her answer. Thank you. Um, so we have Councilman Cross and Councilman Steele.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I was, I was gonna second Mr. Steele's, um, motion, but, um, you know, we, we've had this discussion for almost three months, I would say. You know, I know, I know there's, I know, I know there was gonna be a couple of council reps. I didn't sit, don't sit on the committee and have these questions, valid questions. And, um, but we've discussed this and we, you know, we've looked at options on, on, you know, how to save our casino. You know, the tribe is responsible for a lot of this, you know, the, you know, not, not only not paying bills by the, the, um, previous G M, G M's, but those guys taking, um, what is it, loans for, for utilities, um, you know, another, another, I don't know, part of our money comes out of there. But we, we, I mean, we, we've tapped into the, that, um, that cash cow out there. And we've, um, we cut, we're, so we're just as responsible, Ogallala Sioux Tribe. My recommendation is that if this loan goes through, that we, that we as, as legislators step away from that. Let it operate as a business. Because if we start getting involved, you know, it's gonna, we're not gonna go, get anywhere. It's not gonna, it's not gonna, um, we have to allow, allow the G M to, to do what he's getting paid for. And not, not micromanage that because that's, that's what gets, that's why we can't be successful in that, especially in that casino, the business part of it. So that, that would be my recommendation to, to Tribal Council. So anyway, I just, I just want to say that now, you know, I know we, like, like I said, I know we, we talked about this over and over and over, so thank you.
Thank you. We have a second by Councilman Cross. Steve, I see your hand. Councilman, and that was just a second by Councilman Cross. So I'mma leave you to the end. So we have Councilman Steele and Councilwoman Hoverson.
Yeah, um, you know, back in 2005, when I first came into office, um, the tribe was in debt big time because it mismanaged a lot of money. The old money and some B I A restricted accounts. And we had to make an $18 million loan from shock me. And that, that was, that was something that I wasn't a part of. But, you know, as a decision maker there, you know, we had to de- decide, you know, how to carry forward with the tribe. So I mean, decisions are tough. So, you know, I, I, I don't think the blame's on anyone new coming into this administration, but it is poor leadership. And, 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 and that's on us for, for putting those types of individuals in there to oversee that. Um, but to say that the tribe should stick it, to not put our, our, our hands in the cookie jar. The only money that ever, the tribe ever takes out of there is just for the allocations. And that's for our districts. If there's any other type of money we get from there, let me know, because I, I, I haven't seen anything other than the allocations. I do know that if we, Cora, how long, how long can we flow as is without a loan? So we're pretty much like shut the doors today? That's where we're at?
We can't. We can't operate. Their account is negative. And, um, payroll, we have payroll to do. And, um, we won't be able to operate. And, and the new G M, Mr. Fagan, said if, if we can't make the loan, then was, I'll help you make a plan to liquidate, which basically means close the doors, sell everything, at least to bring our accounts positive. Otherwise, the tribe will have to cover that too.
So, but there's, there's no guarantee that we make the loan, that this business will flourish because of other opportunities in, in Nebraska and surrounding areas, right?
What business has a guarantee?
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
And then, and then we go further in debt. And then we have individuals lose their jobs and as is it, as it is, you know, having no food stamps, SNAP benefits. I mean, it's, it's, it's tough. So we probably, we're probably gonna make it harder on our people if we don't make the loan, right? Family-wise, people that have families that work out there.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoverson?
Thank you. You know, it's, it's a misconception out there that tribal casinos are what flourish tribes. And I see a lot of negativity, especially what we went through with this snap shutdown with the misconception out there that people are like, why aren't you guys, um, getting into your casino funding, casino monies to help your people? They don't realize that the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, our casino is in the middle of nowhere. And it's, um, it's challenging to keep that casino operating, not only for jobs, but for funding to our tribe. And it's easy to point fingers, point the, point fingers everywhere, but as, but ourselves. You know, people, we know what the shortfalls were in that casino for a very long time. And it was up to us to try to come up with a solution years ago as it went on its downfall. And now with the hotel shut down and the talks of the casino shut down. But we're entrusted as tribal representatives with the oversight to ensure that that brings funding to our tribe. You know, with this new general manager that's in there, I hope that he could compete, complete a financial audit to show what we could do to recover our casino so that it flourishes once again. So we're able to help our districts out. So we're able to give our district executive boards and our districts out their funding because right now they have nothing. And, you know, I, it's hard to support another loan, but when you see that we have it's, when you see that it's something that's gonna hopefully impact our tribe in a positive direction, you know, I have no choice but to support that initiative because that is a lot of jobs. That's, that's a lot of people's livelihood out there that depend on this casino. And this new general manager, he's come up with a plan. He's come up with so many solutions. You know, I'm not on economic... You know, I'm not on economic business development committee. I haven't even had the chance to be introduced to the general manager. But just by listening to and seeing all of his plans on paper on how to recover that casino to be, to flourish, gives me a hope that, and all I could say is if the general manager is listening, can we get our bingo back? Thank you.
Councilman Stange soldier?
I think we need to just learn from our mistakes, you know, the progression of the casino has got to be monitored every month. And if we're on a downhill slide, we can't be sitting in here in a year and two months taking out another loan. Because I guarantee I'll be looking around this room and I won't see any of you guys in here. A lot of you won't be coming back here. But no, we need to get this vote going and we'll get on the road.
You were the last comment. We still have a motion to second on the floor. Seeing no other, oh, oh yeah, I forgot about Steve. Go ahead, Steve.
Just wanted to again, let the council know that the first payment is about 49,000 and it will be due in December. And according to the first draft of the loan documents, it would be due December 7th. So and the loan is secured by a certificate of deposit in the full amount of the loan, which is in the tribe's name alone. And the bank would have the right to seize funds to cover any default or debt from that CD.
Thanks, Steve. I have one more question from Councilman Gossberg.
Cora, are we gonna be able to make that payment like that? I mean, do you think, do you think we should try to work with the bank to lower it? Because that's 48,000. I don't think we'll be able to do that for like the first couple of months.
That was actually the agreement that the general manager wanted to make because it was the lowest option. She suggested quarterly or biannually at the bank. But that allows a bigger principal balance, so it makes the interest higher. So the GM requested that we be able to do monthly payments.
Well, I guess apparently it must have it worked out where you could pay it now for the first couple of months. I'm just a little bit worried about the first couple of months.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
One once, any other question? Just kidding. We have a motion to second. Madam Secretary, can you call a vote, please?
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenlaw Senior.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man. Donara Gossberg.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Garfield Still. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Hi, guys. Yes.
Council, that motion passes 16 yes, two no, one not voting. We have a motion adjourned by Councilman.
Second.
Councilman Poyer. We have a second by Councilman Stange soldier and Lunderman. And Councilwoman Spotted Bear has a question, I believe, or a comment.
It's just a comment. I just want to remind the committee that we did make the motion to go enter into the lawsuit against Kelsey and that's under the online gaming. So just want to make you all aware of that as well.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote to adjourn, please?
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
David Poyer. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenlaw.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston. Bo Little White Man. Donara Gossberg.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Garfield Still. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Council, a motion to adjourn passes 17 yes, two not voting. Will adjourn at 2:39. Thank you.